Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can come and do the business of the city. Help us to make the decisions that are wise for this city. We thank you for our wonderful staff, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you may notice, I am not Mayor Crowder. You will remember him as a curse, he's not feeling well tonight. Before we start our meeting, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment? If you would, come forward and state your name and address. Once again, if there's any public comment, come forward. Seeing them, I will close that. Thank you. Now, for the council, the consent agenda. Do we have any comments or any motion?
March.
Carrie.
I would like to make the motion that we should consent to the agenda.
Second?
Second by Councilwoman Babbitt. Second by Melody Shelby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie, thank you both. Be patient with me, folks, I'm getting there. Presentations now of the hearings and the action items. The first item on our action item agenda tonight, Mike Rizzatello is going to tell us about. The memorandum of understanding, MOU, the Lime Bike operation.
So I'll provide the brief summary because we went over this past meetings. It's gone through the Park Arbor Recreation Board. So there is a bicycle ride share provider called Lime Bike, and they've been rapidly expanding all across the United States, and they express some interest in our market. Currently, there's lots of cities actually bidding for this because it's no cost to the city. But in our case, because we expressed some interest earlier on, they've committed to keeping us higher up on their list. So the current cost for customers goes either a dollar for 30 minutes or 50 cents for 30 minutes if a student, and they even offer cheaper black options if you bought a monthly membership. Nice thing about this offering is that we would not have to build bike racks. It has a lock-in mechanism on the said bicycle. The current kind of, I hesitate really about contract, it's more of a memorandum of understanding because technically with just providing these services, they could just come into the city and provide the services, but they don't like doing business like that. They like to have a relationship with the city. So they provided us a memorandum of understanding, and they would work with us figuring out where to place the bikes. They actually would hire a staff member to make sure they aren't placing in improper places. The bicycles have GPS on them, so they're able to keep track where they end up going. And that actually has interest to us because on a quarterly basis, they would actually share with us a heat map about the most utilized bike routes. So that could actually help plan into transportation. And yeah, there's really no cost to us. We've talked with the university, they have interest in it. For now, they said to utilize city right-of-way around their campus. They're running it up the chain of command as far as internal areas on the campus. But there's an understanding that at least it'd be good on the city right-of-way. It went through our Park Arbor Recreation Advisory Board. Originally, the concept from that board was to wait until a city of all law didn't jointly do it at the same time. However, they're going through a very iterative process, and our Park Arbor Recreation Board, they decided that it was really time to basically take care of our own and do this. So they decided to recommend to the council we adopt this. The MOU should be adopted, would be for three years, but in there at any time if they have bizarre-like behaviors, we could always give them notice to terminate. And I would say definitely the power in this MOU, it's definitely slanted in our favor on this. They realize that they don't have a significantly long track record, but they definitely want to spread this all over the United States locally. They're in Seattle right now, and they're in the process of getting everything going in Poland and Moscow. So that's pretty much, that in a nutshell.
Any questions?
I would like to move that the city council approve the memorandum of understanding of Lime Bike.
Second.
I want to call for Melody. Can I call you by the first name, Councilwoman Shelby, and seconded by Councilwoman Cleveland? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Lime Bike, that's interesting, isn't it? Lime is green, right?
Break.
Lime is green. Okay. Mr. Gordon, the exception of private infrastructure code.
Thank you, council. I am going to make this very brief, you've seen this three times before. You've seen it at your workshop on January 30th, you saw it last council meeting. And tonight, we're asking you to take a look at it in terms of taking action on it. Again, this is the code that we are putting before you to consider production that allows the city to entertain assuming and adopting and taking ownership of private infrastructure. Again, this was pretty much started off by auto meadows coming down saying, hey, we've got a problem, would you consider taking our infrastructure? And so this gives them a map, a road forward to do that involves them coming up with a proposal, the mayor brings that to council. Council takes a look at it, decides whether or not that's something they want to go forward with. If so, then they put down a deposit to cover vetting the final details of that proposal. And then the city comes back and says, here's what we can do. If they agree to that, then they move forward. The city agrees to assume, and then the development forms a local rural district. And then from then on, it becomes the city's property. So that's what's before you, and if there are any questions, if you'd like to answer.
And I would just add that this code isn't just for auto meadows, it's for any subdivision in the city of College Place because they require these subdivisions that have private roadways. And as it gets older, it becomes problematic for folks who maybe weren't aware that a lot of that infrastructure was in fact private, so.
Any other questions?
When they formed the Transportation Improvement District, that's with the intention, local improvement, sorry, improvement district, that was the intention to bring the, to fund improvements to city streets, to bring them up to city standards, right?
There's a couple ways I can learn. One is they can improve it themselves, as it were, and then enter into the LID, excuse me, the Local Grooming District or LID to the extent necessary to finalize that process. Or it's possible we could entertain a process by which they form the LID ahead of time, and then we assume that responsibility and pay for it out of the funds that we collect from that LID.
Okay, and I guess which direction they go would be part of that proposal they present?
Yeah, I think that has something to do with what the council's preference would be as well.
Other questions?
All motion to adopt ordinance number 18-007, establishing Chapter 3.22, Assumption of Private Infrastructure to the College Place Municipal Code.
I'll thank you.
First by Councilwoman Cleveland, and seconded by Councilwoman Sherman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rizzatello, South College Place Planning Community Economic Revitalization Board.
Yep, thank you. This agenda item is basically certifying a resolution to the Community Economic Revitalization Board to do a planning and infrastructure analysis for South College Place area. So basically along state route, 125 Meadow Brook area down to Old Milton, and just do a pre-planning assessment. This was brought forth as an introductory item the last meeting. Main reason is because now they actually have money from the state capital funds, and a lot of folks are going after it, so they will run out of money soon. And I've been told that they are probably going to discontinue their grant program after this year, the planning one. So it would be advantageous for us to put in for us now. There is no commitment, this just allows us to put in for it. And should this body decide not to accept the grant, that would be up to this body at a certain time. But this allows us to put our name in the hat for it.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 18-005, authorizing and supporting Community Economic Revitalization Board application for the South College Place Planning Study.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Sherman, and seconded by Councilwoman Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see these people every week, and you know I can't remember their names when I look at them now.
Some weeks I can't even remember my own name, Marjorie.
I'm the one that asked for our names to be on the back of the board so we could see them ourselves, mind ourselves.
When I get to heaven, it's going to be my name over the New Garden because Nyhagen means new garden, so you can all come see me, okay? All right, Department of Natural Resources agreement, Chief Winter.
They seem to be on a roll, so I'm not going to slow you down, hopefully. In dealing with a state agency, sometimes we do what we think is best, and then they tell us, well, you're doing a great job, but here's another agreement. We've signed on to this agreement in years past. In my research, I couldn't tell you when, even though we have equipment from this agreement in the past, back in the 90s, we still have some of that. It expires every five years. Our guess is it expired early 2000. We've applied for some grants, and they said, you know, this great opportunity is coming up. However, you need to do this agreement again so that we can hand you federal money through us. So that is what we are asking for today. I'd like to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
What are some of the benefits of this agreement?
Free stuff.
Yeah. I like that.
Free money.
Seems advantageous.
Most of their grants are free money, they pay half the cost of whatever we're purchasing through them. We've received over eight vehicles from them in the past. Some of you who've been here a while, we used to have a military six-by-six truck with a tank and a pump in the back, and we'd take that out on brass fires and that type of stuff. Small pickups, we have a generator and light trailer that's theirs. Those we don't have to pay for except for up to $2,000.
I'd like, I would make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Fire District Assistant Agreement between the city and Washington State Department of Natural Resources.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Peterson and seconded by Councilwoman Babbitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gordon, the water system consolidation.
Thank you. As you recall, back in August last year, we put together a agreement with RH2 who was responsible for designing two separate projects for us. One was the consolidation project, which is well number one relocation, and a loop line to feed water back into our system. And a second project, which we call well number two relocation. Okay, so both of those are in this particular design contract. And as you recall, just before you folks approved it, the capital budget, we just came down the capital budget wasn't going to be passed. And so we were kind of at a impasse a little bit. We went ahead and approved the contract with the understanding that we would be very careful in giving our notices to proceed on particular elements of that contract. So we met with them, and they came up with a whole, honestly, revised status quo, not new school ones, but kind of structured differently so we get through to well number two. And so as a part of that, they added in a couple of elements that they had left out in the original agreement, we knew about those. And in addition to that, they added in an element which normally is delayed until after the full design, and that's the construction engineering. Because we want to get this project done, we decided to add that particular item into this contract, in this amendment. And that will be for the consolidation project of the well at CCF, okay? Am I going too quickly on the CCF thing? Everybody remembers that we only have one out of three wells currently operational, okay? So what we're doing tonight is we're actually amending the contract to add in effectively that construction engineering, as well as, I think there was some cultural resources that we needed for well number one, and a couple of the smaller items. The backstory to this is in addition to getting the $3 million grant, we also were, that we've also got 1.2 million, not grant, it's a loan. It's 50% forgivable. Well, we have another 50% forgivable loan that they offered to us, to the 21.2 million, a little bit more than that. And on top of that, Mike has been successful in lobbying for our legislative request for another $900,000. So we would like to get these wells in the ground as soon as possible. There's been a delay, can't guarantee our timeline like we were hoping. But if we're, if we can, still like to get one either in the ground this year or early next year, in time for the next summer season. So this contract will allow us to proceed forth RH2 to get final design done for both projects, as well as the construction engineering for well number one, which is that consolidation project.
Where are all the wells located now?
I'd have to show you a diagram, but most of them are in the center of town. And then we have one down towards to the east of Walmart in Meadow Brook area. That's our well number three, which is currently active. The other two, one we're planning on moving to the Christ Community Fellowship site, which is south of town.
That was the one that was on Fourth Street, right?
Yes, and then the other one, we're thinking about moving to maybe Maple Street, possibly. So those are the, that's kind of what's coming up, and this is what will help us design for that.
I think you have a question.
So there's some new movable parts here. If I understand this correctly, you were talking about the $900,000, you're talking about the $1.000,000. How does that impact overall the bond issues, the loan amounts that we've approved previous? Does that, is, what's the interplay with that?
I don't want to speak for our finance department, but my understanding is we would use these funds, the funds that we have coming onboard to replace the bonds. Even if we're not even taking advantage of some of them.
Well, the bonds that we just borrowed from the new bank will be used for other infrastructure projects, like our regularly scheduled projects that were on our timeline would be up through the rates for the next three years, which we're due to.
And right, you know, so you'd have to look at this almost as cushion or as other needs that haven't been addressed, or?
The DOH loans and the $900,000 appropriation would be only used on the well projects. And then the other money could go towards all the other projects that were on our list before the well scale. Does that make sense?
Sure.
And we might not have to borrow the whole four and a half million now.
Okay. Yeah, great. Thank you.
And I would just like to add off their bond issue as well, that something that was also utilized to get the additional water right.
That's, that's right.
Any other questions?
I would like to move that we approve contract amendment number one to increase the contract with RH2 Engineering by $184,855 for a total contract amount of $1.1,181,850 plus a 10% contingency of $118,185 for not to exceed total amount of $1,300,035.
Second. The motion was made by Councilwoman Shelby and seconded by Councilwoman Sherman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, thank you. Purchase authority for the wild land vehicle. Chief Winter again, welcome back.
In last year's budget, we, the council was gracious enough to approve a line for us to go out and search for a used wild land vehicle to replace the one that you may remember that the steering drums fell out of while they were driving.
A little embarrassing.
God, no one was hurt.
Even higher power, that's right. So you were gracious enough to approve that amount, and now I'm needing you to say yes, you can spend that if you find something because we think we have found something, and we are hoping we get it. But if not, and we go and find something else, it takes a while to get back into the council, and we could lose an opportunity again. Currently, we're looking at a vehicle out of Utah for about $82,000. And so that $100,000 would help us secure that and pay for the mechanic to go look at it, and all those types of things with that hands. You're asking for council's approval on.
Questions?
What? Oh, I was going to motion, did you have a question?
No, go ahead.
Oh, well, I guess I would like to motion to authorize staff to spend up to the budgeted amount of $100,000 for the purchase of a wild land vehicle for the fire department, and the surplus of one from the old wild land vehicles.
Second.
Question by Councilwoman Cleveland, seconded by Councilwoman Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you, thank you. Purchase approval for used WSP patrol vehicle.
You are missing your podium.
Yes.
Where is it? Guys, we need to pause.
Need to open an investigation?
Yeah.
Do we have a loss of viable equipment here that you need to track down?
We need a report done.
So I'm coming forward, this was approved through the budget, and we are purchasing some used vehicles to establish a fleet to give our officers to become vehicles. And it is responsible, we have some used vehicles to do state patrol that meet the state bids. So with emergency packages included, it's about $14,000. And there'd be some additional costs, I would go along with that with some other equipment that needed to be replaced, like radios and things like that. It's $120,000 per vehicle a day, which we thought. So we're going to be able to save some money to obtain that, we're excited about that. So with your permission, when they're going to start forming vehicles, would you permission like to have the purchase approval to go for and buy those? I have to say that it's significantly cheaper than a fire truck.
Your six are cheaper than a fire.
Yes.
The Lime Bikes.
I'm sorry. I'm just wondering, the Ford SUV Interceptors, so like, what kind of a vehicle are those?
It's the same exact vehicle we currently have.
Just like the ones we have now?
The same as in the SUV?
Yes.
Oh. Not the Crown Vix?
So it's the same year period, so.
Wow.
Perfect.
Wow.
Nice.
Yeah.
So it'll be like a fleet, not just a bunch of mismatched vehicles?
Yeah, so we should be able to, the state car's been at around $110,000, so you know, I hope to get a few years out of them. And it'd be a good turn on mine, so I'm pretty happy about it.
They're painted?
Sorry?
Will they be painted?
They, they're white.
White, okay.
And they will strip them, so they're going to, we were paying a lot of extra money to have them keep the light bar on there and a few other things for us because it's cheaper to use than it is to purchase a new. But all we have to do is put the emblems on. And we have redesigned our emblem, and the officer's hat, actually. So it's a little sleeker, a little more contemporary, and matches our patch a little bit better. So, and that's about $500 per car, put those emblems on. And so, yeah, they'll come, they'll come along.
Okay, okay.
Yes. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of six used Ford SUV interceptors from the Washington State Patrol at the estimated price of $14,000 per vehicle. This cost includes the emergency equipment and hardware excluding radio, SMD, and computer.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Sherman, accepted by Councilwoman Babbitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Accepted, thank you.
All right, I've got another one for you. And this is the permission, and I really hope you approve this because we already have it.
Is this like asking for forgiveness item?
Yes, well, this is one of those things where we were able to fire this through the federal legal program, which they give us under estimated value. So it's kind of one of those things when they put it out there on the market, they say, yes, the first person that grabs it, gets it. So we went ahead and said, yes, we'll take it, and it's a great value. It's a 2012 Ford Escape Hybrid four-wheel drive, it gets like 46 miles per gallon. It's a good amount of car. It's black, it's parked out here, if you ever looked at it, it's in great shape, and we're really excited about it. So with all the licensing, I think it was $12,250. So we're asking to, for your approval to give the federal government that money.
Motion to approve purchase of 2012 Ford Escape Hybrid four-wheel drive vehicle to be used by detective.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Peterson, seconded by Councilwoman Shelby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
I didn't have it on my original.
We've added after I did Marjorie's topic.
Well, and I, we didn't get an, do we normally get an email when you update? Because I didn't get an email. Okay.
Okay, this item, please just look at this and let me know if you have any questions. In the National Legacies Cities, they offer a private sewer and water line insurance program. And basically what that is, is in the case with our city here, when you're on the private property, the service lateral that is owned by the said homeowner. And what a lot of folks don't realize until it breaks, unfortunately, is that that's their responsibility, and that becomes very problematic to try and put together the funds to pay it. I've seen a couple of those cases since I've been here. The National Legacies Cities conducted outreach to the city about this program because the city of Dayton and Hermiston participated in this. And it's basically just a market agreement where they have our permission to just send out information to the community about this. And for each incident, it's about 8,000 cap of like what they'll insure. And typically for your service lateral lines for a incident, that's usually around, it's below the key number. So it's really just a market agreement, and it's up to residents. If they don't want it, they don't want it. But at least it provides the opportunity where if folks don't know about it and they would like to have something like this, they have the opportunity. Because I definitely wasn't aware there were programs like this. And talking with my counterpart in Hermiston, and then Dayton just voted to be part of this, they've seen quite a success with it, so. Any questions or thoughts?
Councilwoman Shelby?
So I thought I had insurance, and then I discovered when my line failed that my insurance company covers up to the right-of-way. And in some states, that's all the homeowner is responsible for, but...
And in some states, that's all the homeowner is responsible for. But here, at least, the homeowner is actually responsible from the right-of-way all the way to the pipe. But your regular homeowner's insurance will not cover that. And it cost me just under eight grand. And come to find out, never buy a house without having it actually
Scoped.
scoped because I asked for a specific inspection of the sewer line and was assured it was fine. And it was actually missing. It's actually two feet of pipe that just wasn't there. So, anyway, sad stories aside, I definitely think this is, is really good. The one thing that I wasn't 100% sure of is it says it covers water from the meter to the home. But our homeowner is responsible from the meter back to the water line?
As far as with this program, you mean?
Well, I mean, in our city, or will they still be left with a gap? Because I haven't had an issue with my water line, so I don't know.
Generally, we, we end up fixing them and take care of it. There is part of the code that says that the homeowner could be charged for material. But generally, we do this along with the project that's going on to replace it. So, we don't, we have very few leaks. We have, but we had to deal with it.
So, I just think it would be good as we, I mean, I think this is a great plan, but it might be helpful for us to look at our code and make sure that we're not leaving gaps.
Well, the, the plan this spring is really to try to do a review where you tell me code and do appropriate revisions because that's one of the last areas of code that's fairly problematic, I think, areas.
Cool. Yeah, this is a great program.
Yeah, if you don't know, that's fine. But what was the approximate premium for this coverage, you know, yearly, I guess?
Yeah. I, I believe that what one, I'm trying to remember, I'm probably getting it inverse, water and sewer. But one of them was like six a month, the other one was seven a month. And then you got a little bit of a discount if you signed up year to year, I think around like 60.
$60 a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. No, yeah, approximately. Yeah, thank you. That's good.
Further questions? Chief Morris, Police Department, 27th and Vice Base Policy, policing and profiling report.
Didn't we skip something?
Yeah. So, we're skipping this because Harvey isn't here.
Because Harvey is here.
I'm sorry. To the council, Mr. Our Mayor will present that when he has, we'll leave that out tonight.
It'll, it'll work.
Okay. So, in 2002, the state legislature required law enforcement agencies to report on bias-based policing in our RCW 4311410. And I am presenting to you the 2017 report. This is actually the first time the agency's done one of these reports as studies. So, I'm really excited to provide that to you. I'm also happy to let you know the analysis has no indication of initial profiling or bias in the performance of our duties, which is great. So, what the RCW requires is that we adopt our policy, doesn't mean to condemn or break that initial profiling. We, it requires us to have an audit in existing procedures and policy, continue training, and ensure that we have a place to sit and complain with the process, which we have all those, many of those requirements. And if you get a chance to look through it, it specifically talks about the RCW and requirements. It talks about what vice-based policing is. And that policing is described as an inbreeding reliance on characteristics such as race, ethnicity, national origin, religious sex, sexual orientation, gender, again, in your expression, economic status, age, cultural group, disability, affiliation, any background with this as the basis of providing and bringing law enforcement services or enforcement. And there's a lot more information if you'd like to look at that. It talks about each one of the categories we require a report on. And then it gets into the data. And the data is interesting and it's fun to look at, which is very consistent with our demographics in our community. So, it's pretty cool. It's pretty fun to look at. It's really a fun way for me to look at it and analyze of what we're doing. I think there's some things we can do. There's some training. We have a lot of unknowns on there. Maybe we can improve on that next year. But I'm very happy and pleased to present this to you and let you know that our super culturalists will give a great shot.
Thank you.
I have a question and a couple of comments. One, I'm really happy to see this report and both that you're paying attention to it and that the results were so good. But I'm curious as to how you determine, like especially with traffic tickets, how do you determine the race? Is it based on the driver's license or?
So, we're not allowed to ask an individual their race. So, the officers, putting training and experience, make their best guess on what that is. So, and I think that, you know, we have a lot of unknowns on there. I mean, the unknown number is low, but still I think we can do a good job on some of that. That's the one thing I noticed out of this report. For instance, out of the 259 fractions issued last year, seven were unknown. So, I'd like to see that change in the data. But it is difficult sometimes. You don't know. So, you can put down.
Yeah, yeah. I kind of wondered. I guess I would prefer to stay with unknown instead of them guessing wrongly.
Yeah, I think that's the safe way to do it. It's, I think it's, it's responsible to report on who we're coming in contact with in our community. It's heat transfer, it's very important. It's something I really expect from our officers. And this is, these numbers are really good. And I'm very happy to see it.
My other comment is for future years, I think it would be easier to review if you had the traffic infraction or arrest information and put the demographic information right beside it.
Right beside each other.
Yeah. So, you know, because I'm looking at it going, okay, so what percent were whites versus what percent are in the demographics are white? And, you know, so it was all, it was all there. It was just in different places. So, and, you know, my quick things was looking like 85% of the arrests were white. And demographically, it's 77% white. So, you know, yay, we're number one.
Yeah. Well, for the City College Place, the demographics are, so you broke my six.
Oh, yes, there it is. I guess I was looking at the valley. But, but having those side by side, I think would help with looking at the report, yeah.
My suggestion.
Any other?
The data we pulled is out of the world. And we're, it's very difficult to pull data out of the program, but we're, we're finding ways to improve upon that. And we had some help from all of those departments. So, I can't thank them enough for their help and assistance on this. And, you know, we're just, we're building the system. And things are going to be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do you believe we got through this tonight, folks? I want to thank
This is a Lance Speed record. It must be Harvey just slows us down.
I want to thank the staff of our city. We have a wonderful staff here, don't we, council?
Yes, yes, we do.
City, don't we have a nice council?
Two gritted teeth.
I've been on this council for 24 years. This is one of the finest groups of people working for this city and one of the nicest and finest councils we've had. And we appreciate you. We, we do appreciate you. But you know something? We don't tell you enough, do we? So, we thank you. And we hope that you have a good week and do
Well, and just a comment that I would like to make is a coworker of mine came up to me today and said, you know, a lot of cool stuff is happening in College Place now that makes us feel more like a community. And I really like it. And I was like, well, that's Mike and the staff that reckon it happens.
Yes, yes. And I've been getting some comments about the signs. It's been great. So, we have a wonderful city to live in, you know? And now, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some adjourn.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All approved. We will go home and enjoy.
Here, I was having so much fun.
I know.
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.